Um, unless I see an objection, I call this Dunwoody City Council meeting to order. Um, seeing none, no objection, this meeting is called to order. Um, Councilman Lambert, I understand you have the invocation and the pledge tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliver it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hmm. Uh, public comments. I have one card. Jeff Cantwell, and you'll have three minutes. Yeah. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Okay, there you go. And make sure the green button is on at the microphone, the light. And someone who works here. Okay, good. All right, you'll have three minutes. Go ahead. Thank you for being here.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, my name is Jeff Cantwell. I am a, uh, parent of kids at three schools here in Dunwoody, and I am on the PTSO for the, uh, Peachtree Middle School, also a member of the softball booster club, um, for the high school and middle school programs which we run through together. So I know that on the agenda to discuss tonight was the, uh, the agreement for the softball program to be able to start using Brook Run, the baseball fields and addressing the, the need for softball support at the, uh, in the city, um, getting a field and getting access. So, um, I wanted to come up and say, for one, just thank you for the support that the city council has provided as we've been trying to find solutions um, for softball in Dunwoody. We haven't really had much luck as we've been moving through the process, but, uh, I think that using the, the fields at Brook Run and giving the girls that time, the, I think we're looking at ten weeks, three hours a day, one field. It's, it's really a, a minute amount of time that's really played out at those fields, but to give those girls the priority, um, and the access to be able to play at their school, play games at their school. Um, I think it's really important for our community. Um, I'm really looking forward to continuing and pushing forward for, for more access for these girls to have a place to play. Uh, but I wanted to take a minute, and I know we have, um, that on the agenda tonight, and wanted to say thank you for that, and just let you know how much the softball community here really is grateful, uh, that the city is working towards solutions to help them, uh, be able to play in their home city. It's a really, it is a growing sport. There's hundreds of girls from six to eighteen that play softball in Dunwoody. Um, so I'm, I'm very, very excited that we're gonna be talking about this and potentially moving it forward and playing at Brook Run, so. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we have a couple of Boy Scouts here. If you just wanna stand up in your seat, uh, stand, that's not, stand up where you're seated. And, um, tell us your name, your troop, and what badge you're working on. Thank you for being here, and we appreciate all the contributions to our community that scouts make with their gold, bronze, and silver, bronze, and eagle projects, and their service hours. So, thank you. All right. Mr. Malthner, I believe you're up next. Brent, is this part of our presentations from our nonprofit partners? Is Brent down here?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Yes, if you want to introduce. I need, I need no introduction apparently from Brent. Um, thank you for, uh, allowing us to, to come before you and, uh, and present today. We're
For people who might not know, why don't you tell us who you are?
Uh, hi, I'm Alan Malthner. I'm the CEO of the Spruil Center for the Arts. Um, annually, we are able to come down to speak before council and the rest of the city to talk about what we've accomplished in the past year and what we're looking to do in the coming year. So,
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Mayor and Council, thank you for having us tonight. Thank you for, um, the opportunity to present where we've been in this past year and to talk to you about where we're going. This is a an amazing year for us. Um, it's coming off an incredible year in two thousand and twenty-two, uh, one with unprecedented support from the community in the city, and we're looking forward on building upon that in the coming year. So with that said, and let me give Can I start the slideshow still? Okay, thank you. Let me begin with, uh, the theme tonight artistically is minimalism. So there's not a lot of, uh, bells and whistles here from an artistic standpoint. Um, but going back to where we were in coming into this year, in two thousand and twenty, in the midst of the pandemic, we did a three-year strategic plan that was specifically designed to, um, one, address the current effects of the pandemic in two thousand and twenty, two, stabilize us in two thousand and twenty-one, and three, plan for the stages of growth in two thousand and twenty-two. So I wanted to review quickly just the four key objectives of that plan. First and foremost was our relevance. Um, and we struggled with that word a lot in trying to determine what it was exactly that we meant. Uh, we very deliberately chose that word relevance over awareness, uh, over, um, advertising, marketing, communication, whatever it is you will, because as a nonprofit, that's truly the benchmark of how we're judged. And so we felt that for us to be successful as a nonprofit, i.e. impactful, what was most important was our relevance in the community. Second was updating our systems and operations. Uh, the pandemic taught us, uh, very quickly that we didn't have the right systems and operational standards in place, uh, that we were not gonna be able to get out of it. So we made a lot of internal improvements, external improvements, both, uh, for the public and for our internal operations to help improve that. Third was our people and our investment in our people, and that's inclusive not only our staff, but our wide range of instructors. We have at any point in time more than sixty instructors teaching at the art center and another hundred that are represented at the gallery. We wanted to make sure that they were also represented in this plan. And then lastly, financial. Uh, as we all know, the, the long-term effects of the pandemic were something that we all struggled with mightily in two thousand and twenty-two. We wanted to make sure that we were in the proper financial position to withstand that pandemic, but then also come out of it stronger than we were going in. So in the third year of that plan, how are we doing? And how do we measure that? Quantitatively, we had our best year ever in two thousand and twenty-two. We offered seven hundred and nineteen classes and had nearly six thousand students. We had another four hundred and ninety-eight that unfortunately remained on waitlist due to capacity issues. We're addressing that with our expansion at exactly the right moment in time. We had another almost twenty-six hundred participants in open studios. Open studios, for those of you that aren't familiar, are free and available to our students when they sign up for classes. So they can come in and use the state-of-the-art facilities at Spruil for jewelry or ceramics, or for some of these heavy investment areas in the arts that they don't have at home. Painting, drawing, obviously, are a little bit easier at home. Things like ceramics, jewelry, glass, that's only accomplished at a place like Spruil. We had over a thousand children in our summer camps last summer, which beat by almost two hundred or higher previously for camps. Um, that's a huge need in this community and the surrounding communities, and we're thrilled to be able to offer, um, those camps for the community. At the gallery, we had over forty-six hundred visitors. We had six shows, including our Holiday Artist Market. Again, that was our best attended year since we've been tracking at the gallery. In total, we had a reach of over fourteen thousand. So we had a huge reach throughout our community, throughout some of the surrounding communities, and is kind of the face of the arts, uh, within the perimeter area. As a metric that we started measuring a few years ago, and that's direct economic support for artists and art administrators. Last year, that was nearly around one point two million dollars. And that's direct compensation, not like when the Super Bowl comes and we have a hundred billion dollars of revenue. This was direct compensation to artists and art administrators alone in two thousand and twenty-two through Spruil. I can't see our, uh, slide there with the slides, but as you can see, our enrollment has returned to pre-pandemic levels. Uh, we had our largest enrollment quarter ever in the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-two with eighteen hundred and twelve students. And we're currently on pace this quarter in winter at twenty percent above what we did last winter. We have fifteen hundred and thirty-seven students as of this morning, and we're on pace for that to reach about seventeen hundred this quarter. In terms of revenues, our fund is derived both from donated revenue and earned income from our classes. When we began the pandemic, more than ninety percent of our income came from an earned perspective. That's really a tenuous situation for a nonprofit or actually most nonprofits to be in. We wanted to diversify that, and you'll see we did that in this past year with almost twenty-five percent of our revenues coming from donated revenue. If we look at that a little bit further, that donated, I'm sorry, that earned income, we'll check earned income first. That earned income, uh, one point two million from classes, another forty-three thousand net from the gallery, and our camps generated three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. These are all gross figures except for the gallery. Uh, there was a hundred thousand dollars in terms of sales and other things that we do at the, uh, Spruil Center. For our donated income, we had a large portion of that come from our restricted contributions. A lot of this went to the current build-out of our kiln building, as well as investments in the, in the facility, investments in public art, uh, invest, investments in specific programs like jewelry, glass, ceramics, where we have restricted accounts. Individual donors were just over a hundred thousand dollars. We received a small amount of foundational and corporate support. We do receive some government support from DeKalb County, and the remainder of that was from fundraising from our Artistic Affair and Spirits for Spruil events. Most importantly is not our revenues as nonprofit, but how we utilize those funds. Here you'll see one point one seven million dollars directly back to artists, art administrators, gallery artists, supporting our local arts economy. Unfortunately, number two is insurance benefits, taxes, those type of things that are responsible for, uh, keeping the business afloat. But number three was nice, uh, again, in art supplies, uh, and outreach in the community. We were very visible this past year at Lemonade Days, at the Farmer's Market, at Light Up Dunwoody, at the Dunwoody High School, at the Dunwoody Arts Festival, in terms of our outreach efforts. Through that, we also had some funding that went towards public art and rent and other facility improvements at our building, uh, as well as general office expenses that comprise the, the rest of the funds that you see. Qualitatively, for us, is often more important than the quantitative numbers. I'm sharing with you these quotes tonight, um, and these are not handpicked from the past year for best of. These are literally in the past month of our operations in two thousand and twenty-two. You have these in your packets. You could read them at will. I'll read the one that probably will make you the most happy, which is the last one on that page. I wish I could move to Dunwoody. I drive from Gainesville to be able to come and take classes. Spruil is awesome. We get these day in and day out, and it's probably the best part of my job. On Fridays, I take a little time to read the surveys. Um, we do a net performer score each quarter as well, and that's generally in the eighty-four, eighty-five range, which is considered world-class. Semester in and semester out. So we're doing great things in that building and out in the community with the arts. By month, and I'll go through this quickly because it's important to note not only the revenues we take and how we spend that money, but what we do with it in the community. Um, I know you all were as happy as we were with the partnership that we formed with Stage Door last year to jointly share our summer camp so that students who come to the building in the summer for both the performing arts and visual arts during the summer. And this was the first time that we did this, and is also the first step and hopefully many future endeavors between us and the other nonprofits in the building. We opened our free coffee studio. Like, what a simple thing, right, to draw a community together. It's two thousand dollars for us in the year in expenses, but we have the whole community there, having coffee, talking, meeting in the hallways. If you reflect on our mission, we foster creativity, but we also foster social connections. And that's what a true community art center should do. The coffee studio helps us in this goal. We had our jewelry in the structure market in February and also added a dedicated staff member to community outreach. Again, we are trying hard to come out of the building and bring the arts to where the people are at throughout our community. In doing so, and in March, we participated in Snapdragon's Garden at the Community Gardens, and we hosted Artistic Affair back in our plaza as part of the revamp and part of activating that space. Uh, it was a great event. Shameless plug, it's March twenty-fourth this year. Tickets are available on February first, but you can join now as a host or sponsor. In April, we did community outreach, as I mentioned, Lemonade Days, the Dunwoody High School Art Gala, and then also regionally at things like the Piedmont Arts Festival, I'm sorry, the Dogwood, uh, Festival at Piedmont Park, where we supported scholarships for students, uh, to come to Spruil to take classes. In May, our gallery drew more than six hundred people at two exhibitions, and we began our visiting artist series for the first time since the pandemic began by flying in artist Tracy Spurgeon from England for a metal clay class. These are the type of things that we do, again, to drive economic impact in the community and to broaden the arts for everybody. We formed our Peer Artist Network, which is a, a business class for artists, teaching them basics in law and accounting and marketing and social media so that they can be better, better business people as well as artists. We formed a partnership with the Art Pharmacy, a wonderful nonprofit that provides quote-unquote prescriptions for people to take art classes for free. We're one of the places where people go to fulfill these prescriptions throughout the community to help their mental well-being. In August, we again activated our plaza with our pop-up, and I know I saw almost all of you guys there, which was great. This free community event, uh, also partnered with others in the building, the Handweavers and Stage Door, and, um, we performed artist demonstrations. We gave people an opportunity to try their hand. Uh, not only the things that Spruil does, but the Handweavers were out there, Stage Door did some improv with some guests. So a great community event, again, activating that space. In September, we hosted our open house and our Back to Spruil Week with over a week of classes, many of them free for the public, and continued our visiting artist series by bringing in, um, Jesus Minguez from Orlando for ceramics. In October, we were a major participant in Arts and Culture Month with our Mosaic Mandala Project, which had over a hundred people from the community, and we created another fifteen mandalas on the back wall. And we unveiled our Amplify mural at Spirits for Spruil event, uh, which has been a focal point over the past few months, uh, right there on the corner of Meadow Lane. In November, we were fortunate to receive a grant from the Georgia Found, um, Center for the Council for the Arts, uh, to help fund the kiln building that you all supported as well with the building out and purchasing of the kiln so that we can handle the throughput for the additional students we're anticipating in the coming year. And we were at Light Up Dunwoody to provide crafts and letters for seniors at that event. Our Holiday Artist Market this year was one of our best ever. We had nearly three thousand transactions and financially supported a hundred and thirteen different artists, uh, for more than forty thousand dollars in income from them during the holiday season. So we had just an incredible two thousand and twenty-two, um, that we're really proud of. Looking forward to twenty-three, uh, our operating budget next year has exceeded for the first time two million dollars, which is amazing to think of the impact again that we're having in the community. In addition to that, we are anticipating a two-point-seven million dollar capital investment, uh, in our new seven studio spaces and our community room with the expansion project. So I'm sure you all wanna hear the update on that, so let's skip to that. I know, I'm jumping the gun on the questions. Our, uh, permit has been approved, which is fantastic on the expansion project. We're still waiting on our land disturbance permit, so we have not started that yet. And, uh, you'll be shocked to hear that we're already experiencing delays in some of the materials that we need for the build-out. I have been told that we should have those, and we should begin on April second with our ribbon cutting that we hope you all will attend. When we know that data is firm, we will send a formal invitation, uh, to begin that ribbon cutting for construction on April second with an expected completion date of November second. That's seven months, so we'll see. If, if anyone from the construction group is listening, you're on the hook right now. Um, our kiln building has also faced delays. We are waiting on an electrical panel to get that building completed. Uh, it's ostensibly done as soon as we have the, the kiln, I'm sorry, the panel for the electricity. We have about a two-week window where we'll go ahead and open that. So we're kind of running on half cylinders the, uh, right now for the, uh, kiln expansion project. We are so excited about the social services programs that we're partnering with the city on. Uh, let me review these real quickly for you. Uh, they are Arts for Alzheimer's Program, which is now in its, uh, full phase. We have twenty-four, uh, current, uh, people participating in this program, and that's running, uh, once a week, two separate classes. Uh, and we had our first classes last week, which was just, uh, amazing. It is an absolutely outstanding program, and we're looking to expand that not only at Spruil, but in some of the, uh, retirement communities around us, and we're looking forward to building on that program. We also started this past Sunday our Digital Arts Program for Teens. Uh, the city helped us begin this program by helping us purchase iPads for those that can't afford them and can come to Spruil to learn digital arts. That program began Sunday. We're looking forward to building on that with future workshops and other programs. We're in the process for our free community art closet. We're continuing to offer scholarships for all sorts of students, young and old, uh, scholarships for camps, scholarships for after-school classes, scholarships for weekend programs, and scholarships for young adults who can't and don't have the dispensable income to be able to take our classes. And all that is through your support. We honestly cannot thank you enough for the opportunity to do this for our community. It's something that we have been striving for for years, and we can't wait to report on that um, quarterly, but especially at this time next year when we can speak further to that. Other, uh, things that we're working on this year are increasing our visiting artist series. We have six visiting artists planned this year, and also having artist lectures that are free for the community that talk about art and use that as a conversation point to begin discussions in the community. We're proud to partially announce that we have hired a new gallery director. You will, uh, find out the details on February first when we announce that fully, uh, but we're thrilled by this hire. Uh, we can't wait for y'all to meet them. And, uh, we have great things in store for the gallery that I think you guys will be very happy with. And this summer and into the fall, we'll be beginning a new three-year strategic plan that will take us through the opening of our new expanded facility and help us determine how that operates in the coming years and what we do, um, using our income to help the community and put a focus on the arts. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have, and thank you again for allowing us to come and speak to you today.
Thank you. Um, I'll start down here. Questions, anybody?
Alan, thank you. I really appreciate all you do, and Spruil is a wonderful facility, and I'm looking forward to all the expansion.
Thank you.
I know it's coming. I have no real questions. I just appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much again. When I look at other cities and things, people always say, um, you know, this is private-public partnership, public-private partnership. So, uh, I think it's a great model, and we need to really communicate that to the citizens where we look at some of the places that's completely private or it's completely public. We have the benefit of having that hybrid model to do that, uh, for best, uh, ROI and efficiency. So it's a great model, and I thank you very much for, for this presentation. A lot of details here. Um. Do you ever consider, so I have to check off the first question. That was, when is the build-out, blah, blah, blah. Check that off. I live ahead of you. Um, do you look at where your students are coming from? Do you keep those metrics as well? Do you, do you? Is that out there? Just an idea?
Yeah, so in general, um, about fifty percent of our students come from the immediate, uh, concentric circle where Spruil is located, if you will. So that comprises Dunwoody, Shambly, Doraville, Sandy Springs, Brookhaven. That's about fifty percent. The remaining fifty percent come from outside that area.
That's, that's, it's nice to know. Yeah, so it is a destination.
We, we are certainly have a regional impact. There's, if you compare us to other art centers, um, there's two that I think we'd favor most comparatively to. One is Cullen Wall, obviously, which is Atlanta slash Decatur, and then the second one will be, um, Hudgens, which is Gwinnett. So between Hudgens and Decatur, we're kind of in that general area. Obviously, there's like Abernathy Art Center, which is a much smaller art center, not too far away, uh, but I'd say those two are the most comparable.
Great. Um, and back on your use of funds, your breakdown, that's, look, this is the way you broke it down. You're, the first column, that one point one million, Arts Administration and Artists. So that includes staff payrolls as well.
Uh, not all of payroll, like not our benefits and not, uh, those things, but direct payment, yes.
Right. I mean, it's your discretion what kind of level you wanna provide for that granularity. What would that be? If you had staff payroll as one, and then what's going to artists as the other?
Probably the split would be seven hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, seven hundred, uh, payment to artists, five hundred with, uh, staff administration.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's great to see that. Um, yeah, thank you for that, and I think that was, yeah, yeah, yeah. But thank you so much.
Thanks, Alan. What percentage of students are from Dunwoody specifically? Do you have that?
I don't have that specific number, but I'm happy to, um, pull that data and send that to you.
Thank you.
Sure.
No questions? Thanks for what you do for the community.
Thanks, Rob.
Uh, yeah, just, I'll look at that. Thank you, Alan, your team, your artists, everyone there. You guys do a tremendous job. I was actually, um, just at, uh, just last week at a meeting with the Lock, Lockridge Forest neighborhood, which is kind of split, for those that don't know, between Dunwoody and Peachtree Corners. And, uh, there was a little networking beforehand, was talking with some big building. I had one of your students there that was raving, and I was joining in the rave, and it was actually someone that didn't know, and we recruited them, told them to send them down, so you might have a new student coming your way, but, um, no, you, you guys do great things. As you know, I've taken some classes there. I lo, I love all the work you guys do. Um, it's really encouraging to hear how good a year you had in two thousand and twenty-two, you know, especially with all the things, how, how quickly you've bounced back, and I don't think that's an accident. I think that's attributable to the organization and the hard work that you guys have done. Um, and I'm really encouraged by all the things you talked about coming in two thousand and twenty-three, so thank you, and can't wait for this year.
Thanks.
Um, so just a couple things. Well, first, thank you. People love the classes they take and the camps, and it's a real service to the community. Um, a couple things. One is, to be clear, the money from the city is because of ARP and, um, federal dollars that came in, and the reason your organization is a good fit is because some of the instructions with that money was to target those who had lost the most.
Right.
For example, Alzheimer's, uh, older people were mu, much more heavily impacted by the pandemic than some other groups. Children were the, also, and so it's all great, and I appreciate you providing the services that allows us to spend the funds as they were meant to be spent. Um, I'm grateful for that. The second thing is, is I was pleased to see in your presentation that the gallery had a record year because parking is the biggest pain. And often I will park across the street in the parking lot at the shopping center when you're having an event. I'd like you, it'd be nice if you could formalize that agreement somehow.
So, if I may, uh, we do have a formal agreement, uh, enforcing that formal agreement has proven challenging. Um, I have taken it upon myself to actually go out, uh, and work, so to speak, with the valet.
Oh, no, I meant, I park in the Walmart shopping center.
I understand. A lot of that is because of, um, FOGO.
Yes. And so given that that may never improve, I think it would be nice if we could have confidence that it's okay to park across the street. I think Rosemary or Michael Sterling can connect you to the property manager. I think it would be a really good idea because there was at least one event during the holiday season that I couldn't find a parking space and I went home.
Yeah, it was, it was.
Raining, I think.
Yes, I know the particular event that you were at, and that's, um, precipitated that conversation.
Okay, yeah. So anyway, I'm thrilled that it was a good show, and it was, y'all do great work, and we look forward to hearing about the new director, and thank you for your service. Anybody else? Seeing none, thanks, and you were a great way to kick off the year. Thank you. All right, consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or comments or, uh, whatever?
Mad Mayor, yes.
Can I just make this comment for the purpose of consent on items three and four?
Uh-huh.
Even though it says approval of a five-year contract,
Mm-hmm.
we've reviewed it with John Gates and Sharon and determined that the master agreement does have the state-required annual way out due to we've reviewed it with John Gates and Sharon and determined that the master agreement does have the state required annual way out due to appropriations. So it is subject to being uh undone annually. I just want to make sure y'all know that and the public knows that on items three and four. Move to approve.
Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Rob. Um, can you explain that again?
Well, typically, a government cannot contract except with another governmental entity in Georgia for more than a year at a time with some exceptions. And in this case, the master agreement has a term this five years, but is subject to annual outs. If you, if this city council or future city council determines it's not going to appropriate funds, and that's what the state law allows.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions?
Can we talk about the single source contract? There were other um is this the same company that's currently the city is contracted with for the body cam cameras?
Deputy chief.
I don't believe this was on a prior agenda, so that's I just want to ask a couple of questions.
Uh, yes, sir. Yeah, it uh, we've been with them from from the get-go. There are other companies out there. However, um Axon is compatible, not only with our in-car cameras, but uh with our tasers as well. So we have an officer that goes out onto a scene. They activate a taser. It turns on a body camera for in vicinity of the vehicle. It'll activate that as well.
Okay, so this is really a continuation of the services that we're still it's it's keeping the as-is. It's not completed. It's not replacing. It's just continuing as um new equipment, though. We're getting new equipment through this this these funds correctly.
Yeah, our body cameras as well. We renew those every two years. Um, it's just part of the contract. Batteries start going bad, et cetera, so we just swap them out.
And um, we were satisfied with the level of service that they're providing to us.
Very satisfied. The ease of use, um, the durability of the cameras. We get them knocked off all the time. Uh, we've had no issues, and they are very responsive uh to any type of defects. We send them back. They'll send us another one immediately.
Okay, great. Good to know. Thank you.
Um, can I ask a question since you're up here on these?
Yes, mayor.
So can you, I took a class this weekend, which might make me the most dangerous person in the room. But do we have uh, we have a requirement that when they're interact, when an officer is interacting with the public, the body camera is on, correct?
That's correct. There are some exceptions, like if you're out there directing traffic, you gotta be out on the scene for a while. Sometimes we'll turn it off. But yeah, any initial interaction we have with the public, we turn them on.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have other questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, there's a motion on the floor. I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Sharon.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
And I think I can do the rest of the meeting because there's no action items, right? Mr. Sterling.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Uh, before I bring up the consultants to talk about the Edge City, um, I've had a number of questions from council members, uh, the mayor, the the community at large about our office market, how things are going, and I think giving you some of that information upfront might give you some context for the conversation afterwards. So if you look at Dunwoody's perimeter center market, we have about eight and a half million square feet just in perimeter center. We've got about twenty-one percent vacancy in that office market right now. That's very comparable to other uh uh areas of the city uh of the region, I mean. Um, but at the end of twenty twenty-three, that's going to go up to about twenty-eight percent unless we have large, some large leases. The reason for that is State Farm has two large leases. They're actually their original leases they took out when they first moved here, burn off at the end of twenty twenty-three. They are no no longer in those those that office space right now. So as soon as that happens, our vacancy will go up to about twenty-eight percent, which is significantly higher than any other area um in the region. We we can also think about our office market as as being bifurcated. If you're close to Marta, if you're close to amenities, you're doing very well. Campus two forty-four had two of the largest uh leases in the whole region last year. The further away you are from Marta, the further you are away from amenities, most of those office buildings are older, and those are the ones that are are really struggling. So as you think about our office market, it really is a tale of two different different markets. So with that, we should expect some weakening in assessments. Um, that's not always bad. A number of office buildings are being sold. Um, there's been three very recently that have closed. Uh, they sold for much less than they were valued a a year ago. So it's going to impact our valuation, but it's also going to give an opportunity for those new owners to redevelop those sites or reposition uh those buildings. So it's sort of a a good news, bad news. Uh, retail market's doing very good. We have about three and a half million square feet of retail in in the perimeter market, and there's two point two percent vacancy. So basically, our retail market is full. If you look citywide, we have about ten million square feet of office space, um slightly lower vacancy at nineteen percent and the same, and we have about four and a half million square feet of retail, and that two point two is the same uh citywide. Um, so wanted to have that information before um Andrew and Jonathan.
Before Andrew comes up, I just want you to clarify things for people that are maybe at home or in the audience or up here that don't know. The State Farm leases, those are not the new towers, right?
That is correct. Those were the original leases that State Farm.
In buildings out when they moved here into existing office buildings, it doesn't impact the two, the three towers.
Buildings that I'm talking about are sixty-four in sixty-six perimeter series, which was up across the street from Old City Hall. So yes, um, and they they had other leases throughout the the market. All of those have burned off, or people have subleased those. These are the only two. But it's considerable space. It's it's two full office buildings. So it's it it, we we are certainly looking at some 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 issues. The good news is, we think with with the Edge City two point O vision, this is one of the ways that we we solve that long term.
All right, thank you.
All right, so I'll have um Andrew and Jonathan come up. There we go. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, my name is Andrew Core. I'm a principal um at a pond and company. We've been working on this past year almost. And before I begin, I want to make sure um my colleague, Mr. Fane uh from MXD can hear us and can speak on the um Zoom.
I I can't hear you, Andrew. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're a little quiet, so just make sure you.
How is that?
Lower. You went, go the other direction.
How's that testing?
Yeah.
A little higher?
Yeah, much higher. I don't know if it's on, if you can do much on yours.
Okay, I'll try and vocalize as much as possible, Andrew.
Yes, lean in. Yeah, leaning. I like how you're leaning in, so that we'll just go with that. So again, uh much, first off, I want to say um thank you all who ca- all of you, I believe, came to the last public presentation in November. Um, thank you all. That means a lot for a consulting team to show your supporters elected officials. That means it's very important. Uh, this is the final presentation of this study. Um, and we wanted to kind of the first of the year, a little bit, it was a little fresher after the holidays and ready to go through this. So much of the material you have seen before, whether through the presentations or attending public meetings. So I will brief on some of them, longer on others. Um, Mr. Fane will um chime in on some of the return on investment um that we'll talk about too, uh which somewhat newer information, but very good information, and then we'll um wrap it up. So I'll be succinct as possible. I want to, I want to minimize this, if that's okay, so people can see most of the slide. Um, right now in the bottom corner is kind of where we are, the strategic implementation actions. We've gone through this entire process. This really is just our process slide where we've gone. And we've gone through a lot of different iterations to get where we are today, which is great. We're positioning the city for continued success, not just success. You're already being successful. We're positioning for continued continued success regardless of what's happening in the market. So you're meant to be flexible and nimble. Um, our last public meeting was in October. I said November. I meant October. Um, many of you all participated. It was a really good turnout. It was here in this space. Some final engagement takeaways. Um, again, most of the community members who came were very supportive of the different nodes that we discussed in Edge City, the different areas, and we'll show those again. Um, there's always uh, there were a couple of people who, just two people suggested more single-family housing, both attached and detached, and that's always going to flex, be flexible in a plan like this, that can be done based on what the market dictates. The three Calidic project opportunities were well received. Um, a couple of people have said, hey, we love green space. We love them for our pets, so that's always good. Um, and more people always discussed, hey, we'd love more places to sit, relax, but um, of course, those are very detailed ideas, but again, good to hear. And people are excited about the opportunities to do alternative modes. People really want to get out and walk. I think they feel hamstrung by kind of the only way I can get around is is in my car. I really want to go beyond that. So that was very good to hear. And so this idea of building out a network of green spaces and trails connecting this larger area that we're in today is really going to be beneficial. Um, what you see on the screen is really the summary diagram of Edge City two point O. Um, again, yeah, if you look at that, what you'll see is Dunwoody Marta Station with this idea of the urban node and around building upon that. Just what uh Michael spoke about before, this is su- successive what's already going on there in terms of the office market and building upon that. I'm taking advantage of of Martin Mass Transit and then scaling things down as it works towards existing single-family residential areas. This is aligned with the stakeholder preference and what we heard. Um, this is just, this is represents the terminology that we use to talk about the different scales. Everything from urban to village and everything in between. We will talk about each of these briefly. Um, we wanted to use common terminology as we discuss different ideas and concepts. So we're going to begin with the urban node. This is the area around the mall, the west of Ashford Dunwoody in that core area. Um, as you can see, it represents a a very unique development mix, still heavy on office, um residential and retail. And the focus of that residential mix is really going to be condos, apartments, and stacked flats, but building that density and the image the images you see there are meant to be representative of the type of development you'd like to see. So that's where the most intense development is going to be showcased and around that area. Taking advantage again of mass transit and the existing office market that's already there and that is successful. As we scale down, we go to an area called uh City Node. That's just the terminology we use. Again, this is actually going to flip to be more more of a mix of residential. Um, and then what you're seeing here is townhomes, um stacked flats, condominiums, and also age-restricted units. Um, so there's a flex. The goal goal here is to build a variety of housing types in these different market areas. And there's a couple of different ones. One straddles Ashford Dunwoody. Um, the other is kind of further north and west to where what we know today is kind of the Bassett and Haverty kind of French area. Uh, those areas that are um um earlier developments, nineteen nineties and two thousands, um over time may see redevelopment. As we scale down further, we move into uh something that's less dense, uh what we call the town node. And is, and again, what you see here is really a focus on residential and retail, right? And the retail really focused on those kind of core areas uh at places like Ashford Lane, which are very successful as a redevelopment node, building upon that success and making it localized retail, so people can walk to those spaces and connect with them. And as Michael mentioned, those existing office complexes, the old State Farm areas and those areas kind of along I twenty-five, these are areas ripe for redevelopment. And finally, the Village Node, um, you know, we know this is the Walmart area and the Spruil Art Center, which is we just heard about. And so this area, a long-term um um is looking at kind of, again, more of a mix between residential, some office and retail, but much more low-density. And again, the idea of being transitioning because you're backing up to existing residential, and you want to have a good scale development over time. Part of this idea here too is, as we think about redeveloping this area, we're also introducing new transportation and traffic patterns to make kind of blow out those larger super blocks that we're so used to and make it much more connected. So they're hand in hand when we think about that development style. Quickly by the numbers. Um, and again, this is a twenty-year projections, okay? So first and foremost, we're seeing a a a large increase in population. That's natural because we're introducing more residential over time. Um, the jobs will increase over time as well. Every number you see here is a net gain, so it's not a replacement of one or the other. Uh, Michael talked a little about the current office space, and then again, raising that, obviously, in the short term, we're seeing changes in the office space market. But again, this is a twenty-year vision and build-out. And the retail, we have a lot of retail in this area already, so we're seeing more of it in twenty years, but it's not a radical jump. You know, over twenty years, we're talking about a net gain of over a million um square feet, um but that's a long-term outlook. Um, housing by type, um, we're going again, increasing the housing units overall. But the important thing to remember too is that are we just increasing the housing type, but diversity, which is we've we've heartbrought on this a lot. We want a variety of housing types, which currently don't really don't exist today. It's kind of a binary market. We're really really focused on garden apartments, and we're going to see a lot of that. We're going to diversify that in this plan, and that's the goal here. Okay, Mr. Fane, if you can lean in, we're going to talk about economic impacts, and just give me a shout when you want to change the slides.
Sure thing. Thank you, Andrew Core, and I'll try and project as much as possible and lean in there. Um, there's three types of act, general economic impacts, uh as we can see here, direct economic effects. So that's really the impacts uh on the study area and where you see uh the impacts the most really. Uh, indirect business impacts are those that would be affected by, say, new construction, new business in the study area. So those indirect impacts may fall in or outside the study area. And then induced business uh business impacts are even further down the line where, you know, jobs may be created because there's new construction activity, new jobs, but then at the same time, there's new positions down the line open, somewhere outside the city of Dunwoody as well. So we really like to focus, though, on the direct economic effects or impacts as well. And just uh next slide, Andrew, thank you. Um, to note as well is that we use uh the InPlan modeling software. Uh, so what InPlan does is they uh aggregate all the uh economic impacts together using very specific zip code data. Um, so we're actually able to highlight the zip code specifically for the study area and understand what those impacts are. So it's not taking uh numbers from, you know, somewhere else in Atlanta or somewhere else in Georgia or anything like that, but really focused in on that specific census type and tax type data for uh the study area in Dunwoody. And these are some of the types of economic impacts that we would see. Uh, the total number of new jobs created, the amount of new income coming out of those jobs, of course, an increase in property values and the property taxes coming out of that, uh increases of GDP and business output. Um, some of the items that uh we wanted to just highlight today, and all these types of impacts are, will be, of course, in our report. Uh, next slide, Andrew, but there's several that we wanted to highlight that we feel are the most important. Uh, direct employment, Andrew was showing the amount of new office space and employment space, and I believe it was just over two million square feet over the next twenty years. Uh, direct employment over, and this is over and above what's currently in the area of uh ninety-seven hundred jobs uh at full buildout. So that'd be uh primarily within, of course, professional services. Uh, whether that's could be in life sciences, technology, management of companies, whatever that may be, it'd be within those types of jobs. Uh, you'd see retail sales taxes both going to state and county of significant amounts. Uh, a very large amount you could see on the top right there of the property value created. Uh, again, this is at one point one point eight billion at full buildout. So that's not today or tomorrow, uh but over twenty years, if this realization came about of the Edge City two point O, you'd see close to two billion dollars of further property value created. Um, as well, and coming out of that, annual property taxes generated directly to the city of Dunwoody at full buildout of over five and a half million. Um, I also wanted to note as well, uh very quickly, we don't have it on here, but there's also additional taxes that you see, and a big one is uh twelve point four million dollars annually uh to what InPlan calls a special district. So that's everything such as school, police, fire, um all these um special taxation areas uh that would see uh additional benefits on an annual basis from this type of development. Uh, and the final one I want to touch on is the hotel uh excise tax uh going directly to the city of approximately an additional two million dollars a year. Next slide, Andrew. Uh, the final piece I want to talk about for economic impacts is, you know, what are the positive benefits for the industries as well um that would receive this impact? And this is just within, again, the study area itself, and because we'd be introducing, as Andrew Core had shown, uh so much additional new residential space uh through whether that's stacked flats, townhomes, condos, apartments, or the like, as well as quite a significant amount of uh new office and employment space. Uh, the economic industry that, of course, would see the most impact is food and beverage. So annually, it could receive upwards of fifty-five million dollars of additional spending uh at full buildout over the next twenty years. And that, of course, comes from people, you know, stopping to pick up a coffee in the morning, or grabbing lunch, or going for drinks after work. Uh, or for people who now live in the area, um it's going for dinner just with their families, maybe. So uh a larger impact uh for the local food and beverage industry, um some others, hotels and motels, uh primarily, of course, hotels in this instance, uh of nearly twenty-five million dollars in impact, and that's people for coming for business meetings. Uh, but also just people coming to visit family in the local area, weddings. But also just people coming to visit family in the local area, weddings, funerals, different celebrations and the like. And then of course, there are impacts for other types of industries, employment services, management of companies. These would also see impacts of significant value as well. Andrew?
Thank you, Andrew. Mr. Fane, I want to conclude by covering just three initiatives. And in the final plan, we talked about a series of steps that can be taken right now, you know, again, the goal is to position Dunwoody for continued success. First off is redevelopment facilitation. So one of the ideas to kind of talk about and what we're showing here is kind of leveraging existing infrastructure and available land to create palatable density and walkable spaces. So kind of retrofitting those big block, kind of the big box super block areas and retrofitting them over time. This is a representation of, you know, where a sample big box retrofit, whether it's a Walmart or another property, how you take that and break it down. Such as more more palatable and more human scale, you know, currently typical patterns that are out there today, you have large surface lots, deep setbacks, low one story, maybe one and a half story buildings. And so how do you kind of retrofit that? Even if you left the original building there, looking at different patterns and then introducing different roadway networks and pedestrian connections in there too. So making that so that's one kind of idea that we've talked about and kind of shared with the community. This is again, an example, this is the perimeter village concept. So when I talk about the Walmart where it is today, there's existing big box retail. It's pretty filled in, it's pretty active, but over time you may see where you introduce a secondary street and then also another one going south and just kind of breaking up that area, introducing again, the point being is it going to look like this? Probably not, but the idea is to have diversity in that. So it's not just, you know, large general commercial uses, but it's a mix of things. And you're serving, because it's such a big area, you're serving this node of the community, not just everybody coming in. So it's kind of creates some diversity. Another big thing we heard that a lot of the community members got around, and certainly we heard all from you as well, is kind of prioritize new open space. Right? So new open spaces challenging in a built out area. You have to be smart how you do that. You're smart through partnerships, you're smart by selective, by good programming and good design zoning and working with developers. And also looking at good opportunities for the city to redevelop properties. What you see in the green there are kind of opportunity areas, just very diagrammatically where you begin introducing small neighborhood parks. But they're built around the concept of maybe a larger centralized green space that can bring people together, kind of a town green, so to speak. Now, town green can mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people. You know, the town green in Swanee is going to look different than the ones in Smyrna. But the goal is that brings people together and it creates a vibrant activity beyond the nine to five. One of the ideas here too is as we think about this open space is that's connected to a series of bicycle paths, walking trails and networks. So you can walk between these areas. And the open space serves areas they're trying to function. And so you're not relying on one thing, one space to do everything, but you're you're kind of breaking that down. So we think it's a real, a great opportunity and something to can continue looking at and thinking about as this area develops over the next twenty years. And taking advantage of what you already have, right? You already have some areas that have interest that you want to build upon. This is the idea of the central green space concept. Again, one example was the parking lot in front of the facing Ashford Dunwoody in front of the mall and activating that space. You'll know that area today where they have some already activated spaces in front of the restaurants. It's that parking lot in front where you can really activate that entire area. It has a front door now for the city as you come down Ashford Dunwoody, taking advantage of that road. But also kind of kind of leveraging the adjacent density around it, what's going on in the potential development over time. So by making it a walkable vibrant space that can be connected from all areas. And here's just another example of that and a couple of images just kind of showing what you could do as a central green space. It could look a lot of different ways. This is just there to really inspire. And create connections. Okay. So if you're going to have these great spaces and these new developments, you want to be able to make sure people can walk there and move, move in a variety of manners. And so what you see here is number one, a representation of a more of a build out of a street grid network. Creating redundancy in your transportation network. These are public spaces that can leverage. You can leverage it for stormwater. You can leverage for connectivity. Take advantage of, you can use it to help incentivize development. That's important. But also thinking about the extensive bicycle and roadway and pedestrian network. Obviously, you're looking at the kind of the Greenway Plan right now, but all those ideas feed into this idea, especially what happens here. So again, this is a large area. So breaking it down to smaller nodes that people can connect to, probably people will resonate with. And certainly this was a very popular idea. The other thing I want to say, I know, I know it's been a long time coming, but as Ashford Dunwoody develops, it's a multi-use trail and continues northward. Our goal as part of this is to really kind of break that barrier between the east and west side of Ashford Dunwoody. And this can do that. So it's a really intentional effort to break down some of those physical barriers. This is one example. This is connecting kind of the Gold Kiss Road up adjacent to Marta, up to Hammond Drive. This was actually a recommendation that also came in a parallel study that the perimeter community improvement district did in around the mall area, essentially running from the city boundaries and the Cox Enterprise Campus eastward to Ashford Dunwoody. Pond also worked on that study with PCID and began taking some of those considerations around there. How do you think about the mall? How do you connect through the mall? Break down some of those barriers. This was also a recommendation of thinking about this connection. It's a short segment. It connects to kind of areas that I think will see redevelopment over time. And a way to kind of connect people to the Marty Station in another way. So again, taking advantage of transit and then incentivizing redevelopment over time. So wanted to share that with you all as well. And here's that short little segment. It's not long, but could have tremendous positive impacts. And so that's something that's being kind of thought of, talked about. Again, obviously, as I mentioned, there is the path study ongoing. But this is certainly something to keep in mind and something that I think is very supportive by the PCID as well. Next steps and I'm done. One of the things we've highlighted the plan is to have continued stakeholder consensus building. The one of the best ways you can do that is first off, tell people about your success. I call it the state of the edge, but let's, you know, get people out there and talking about what's happening down here in a positive way, kind of build that regional focus and why this area is so vital to the region. Continued emphasis on developer tours and forums. Obviously, you've got Michael here in a great resource. And then visiting engage, I'd say other sister cities. What else are other people doing? They have a similar makeup, composition and story to Dunwoody in the Edge City area. Begin learning from best practices. You don't have to do it in a vacuum and reinvent the wheel and take ideas and share your ideas, what you're doing. My master plan effort, one of the things we've suggested and one is kind of these nodal master plans. This is a big area. So we're looking at, you know, a higher level. But to do a deeper dive, even on certain areas of these nodes that we want to see further developed and further refined is one idea. Marta and PCID is doing a TOD study, looking at the Dunwoody Marty Station, how to activate that area further. So again, it's natural to participate in that study, but to kind of encourage that and maybe involved. One of the things we've suggested is looking at the zoning regulation that typically comes up when we talk about new development. So the first thing, the very easy first step is to do a diagnostic. And where are we? Where are the challenges? What works well? What doesn't? And then help, that gives you direction on how to move ahead. Zoning is complicated and how you, so before you jump into it, you have to kind of know, get a better framework of how to, you know, what's the best path forward. The trail implementation is one, the Gold Kiss Path to Hammond is one that's a really easy win. And then obviously the park programming study, which is something that kind of looking at these these areas in around these potential green spaces. If you begin programming them now, you're proactively helping and working with developers or other property owners and HOAs and people involved to say, this is what we want. So you're kind of building out that program. So with that, I'm happy to take questions. So.
All right, we'll start on Tom's end, if that's okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. And I'm going to ask questions and I don't know, Michael, who's who will be most appropriate to answer them. So just just be on standby. So when you were talking about the the increases in the population and the in the jobs or is first of all, it's a pretty significant population increase, obviously the density you're adding. Two, I guess, questions on that. Is the increase in jobs, is there a presumption that the the new, the people that are moving into the area are also going to be working in the areas or is that, are those completely independent of each other?
They're more connected. I mean, if they worked in tandem, they would be more connected, right? And so if you build a lot more office, but the residential didn't come, then you're going to have to bring people in from out of this. They they work together, but that's in in theory, if it's successful and working generally as the build out, we've shown the model, there would be more people living and working in Dunwoody.
Because obviously that's the ideal situation that the people that are living there are working there and that's not adding to the burden on the traffic and all those other things. So is there, is, are there assumptions here as well? Is is the with the target of the the housing that's being added that this is you know, what what demographic are are we getting with the new housing? Are these young, single workers or these retirees or these people, are these families with children? Is it a mix of all? And is there, is there any presumptions built in there as well?
Yeah, it's hard to predict who's going to do it, but I think a lot of you can see what current trends are, let's say, and let's say new development types. So there is a demand, a strong demand for people who want to downsize, but it will be area. So we took that into account. When you're talking about the areas around State Farm and potential higher density, those are people, it's going to be a range of people. But a lot of times people maybe their first job and they want to move into a studio apartment, that kind of trend. But when they're here, as you've heard, people like to want to stay here, where can they go? So again, their hope is to upper mobility and move into another part of Dunwoody and raise a family or or once you've raised your family and move back down. So there is a trend that we need to go. We don't have specific demographic data. We didn't target certain groups, but that's generally what we're seeing in terms of the market. I don't know if you want to add to that.
Yeah. And I'd also say there's sort of some levers we can we can mess with, right? If we want to, I mean, we came up with with Edge City two point O is the way it is. After a lot of debate and moving things, if we want to to have more office, we may have to do some different things. But we could have more office and more employment and 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 less residential. I think it's also about what we aggressively go after. This is not a static process where we've, you know, the vision's out there and now we walk away and it it happens. It's going to take a lot of aggressive approaching of property owners and new developers to constantly say, this is what we want. And these are the kinds of developments that we want. So if we want more senior, then we need to go after more senior and we have to make it easier for them to get things done. So it it's sort of both ways, right? We can be aggressive and go after what we what we want, but we certainly have talked about balancing out the market. Right now in perimeter, ninety percent of residential is apartments. It's for rent, ten percent is for sale. And we we want to have a more balance. It's never going to be the other way, or it's never going to be probably fifty fifty, but it can be much more balanced than it than it is.
Okay. And you brought up the office space, which is a good segue into my next question. So so I mean, before before we started, we we talked about, we knew this, you know, that there's a potential that by the end of the year, we could be twenty eight percent vacancy on the office space. Obviously, we know the impacts of the pandemic and how how quick people may or may not be returning to office space if we'll ever get a full return. And I know this plan is building, it was a two point two million square feet increase. So I guess how do we reconcile that? And do we do we even know? Are we still in a wait and see mode? And then also is that two point, are we is part of that at, obviously, it's a net gain, but is that because we're removing old office space, replacing it with new? How what is that whole dynamic?
Let me see how to answer that one. It is a net gain. We can't, we don't have kind of a to look into the future, target down twenty years down the way, two point two million sounds like a lot, but we're over twenty years. It will recycle. And so you're going to get in another ten years, you're going to get a very different office environment. It's going to look different than what we are today. So again, we're, but you have to remember too, we're introducing, you're 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 drawing in more people. So even if more people are working from home, maybe half the time, you're still trying to draw in new industry and new people, right? You still want to bring that in. So there's going to be a net gain. It's actually, you already have a lot anyway. So the two point two sounds like a lot and it is, but it is over twenty years. And so it's going to take, and right now it's going to look different. And what we're seeing a lot of models of this all all old office buildings and you can look downtown Atlanta, let me know, look at Peachtree Center, they're trying to figure out what to do. They're going to, it's going to look look very different. It may be live work office below and residential top, a very different kind of mixed use, right? It may be a flex office space that looks differently. And we don't know what industries will come in here, right? And so again, intentionality is what Michael and the city want to pursue will then dictate some of those levers and change. I hope that, yeah.
Yeah. And and I would say I would assume that that office comes later. I don't see a huge demand for brand new office, although Campus two forty four leased up incredibly quickly. And so you could see some more, we're probably going to see some older office either disappear, either being scraped and something new or finding a new use for that. It is an example, two point two is is the three buildings that State Farm built. That's about two, two point two million square feet. So it is significant. I mean, it's on the aggressive side of of what the consultants thought could happen. And we try to be realistic. This is not just, let's, let's choose a number. This is a realistic number, but it is on the aggressive, aggressive side. What we probably are going to see is some smaller office, like High Street's building about a hundred thousand square feet of office, but it's small. Loft office for very small businesses, you're probably not going to see big four hundred thousand square foot office buildings come out of the ground anytime soon.
I I decided curiosity in the economic impacts part, there was casino hotels.
That's just a terminology. It's like the standard, ignore that.
Okay. I didn't know. I didn't know if we're getting casinos in the in Dunwoody already.
Assume that it 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 just includes all hotels.
Okay.
It's a, it's a terminology thing in in plants, not has nothing to do with what we're.
Okay. All right. So in general, I just want to say, these are more general comments. I understand the premise that all of this is built on. I've been engaged in this whole process since it started and I largely am excited and agree with the vision. I guess the devil's in the details of how we actually, it's one thing to have a shiny, great plan. It's another thing is how do we actually do this? And so you talked about stakeholder engagement. At any point has that included, you know, we're not starting with a blank slate. We're not a bunch of, it's not farmland. This is, everything's built out. So is is any of that stakeholder engagement included the existing property owners? Do we know where they are? What's their buy in? What's their comfort level with us even having this discussion about their property?
We have, we agree with them.
Well, I I will say they were included. They did interviews with many of them. But but those that were not in future property owners, it really is on our shoulders now to make sure that these property owners understand this vision, that this is what we're looking for. That's already started. There have been, I I think I mentioned, there's been a number of office buildings recently sold. We're either have met with them or starting to meet with them. This is the very much the beginning of the process. This is, this is not the end. This is, gives us now a tool. And it hopefully gives all of you a tool to go out and tell people what we want.
And and how do we, and I I don't know if you have the answer, but I'm I'm trying to figure out how how do we implement implement this? So you know, I know it's, it's going to be done in stages. I obviously, we're not going to tear down the whole perimeter and rebuild it, you know, over the next couple. And but a lot of this depends on new street grids and new, and so did, doing it incrementally is going to be challenging to say the least. And again, I don't want to say that I don't share the vision. I'm just it's one thing to have a great plan. It's another thing, how do you implement it? And I think that's the more important part is how how do we? If this is what we want, how do we make it a reality? How do we incrementally do that? How do we plan for it? Do we have to preactively rezone? Do we have to? I'm, is that a part of this process? And and how do we get there?
So if you want, the goal was for what you can do from the public side is to reduce barriers for redevelopment or reduce barriers for change, right? We we talked about some of these ideas here and some of these feel nebulous, like, okay, we have to bring developers in and new property owners, but that's how you start. You really have to kind of create a common language and bring people in and do that. Zoning, yeah, zoning is one way to do it. We talked to developers, if you want a certain type of development. Does your zoning can allow for it in this area? Does your character area and your comprehensive plan allow and actively name, we want some of these items. If I'm a developer, I don't know that I'm coming from the outside. I look at that and I say, well, I can't do some of the things you want me to do. And you tell me this is what you want, but it's not aligned with your vision. So and then these are things that are like, you know, comprehensive plan amendments are made all the time, right? This is a vision. You would talk to the team and see how you would do that zoning code, like what's, what's the barrier, right? Let's say to introduce set flats or anything like that, right? And kind of bring it in there. You start reducing those barriers and obstacles. And then introducing a very clear understanding of how you, how this goes about. So. And then introducing a very clear understanding of how you, how this goes about. So, uh, you reduce some notes. So you talk about the, the street grid, absolutely. But, um, you already have a pretty good designs, design guidelines. Michael does a great job with that. You continue to reinforce that and say, this is what we want. Uh, we think about the, 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 the parks. So what we don't want is a developer comes along and says, hey, I gave you your two acres of park space and kind of look at me and say, well, that's what I wanted. I mean, I want an active playground and you gave me a turf, you know, mowing, nothing going on. So you proactively plan for that and you tell them what you want and make it very clear. So the expectations are known. I mean, those are just some ways you begin doing that. Um, and you continue, it's a, it's a constant theme. It's, it's a nonstop process of quarterly telling people what's going on, building momentum, um, and, and you create a tipping point where things start shifting and changing. Also, you need one or two of those calendar projects to really say, this is what we want to do and show change, which is why we talked about some of those ideas, those initiatives. Whether it's a small spur trail, which really isn't that long, can be done. What does that do? Well, it, it connects point A to point B, Campus two forty four, which is built out, activates those amenities, connects you to transit, creates a better relationship with Marta. You start thinking like, these are really good things. And yeah, there's a cost and investment, but it's not, it's not, we're not, we're not building eight miles of trail. We're building a quarter mile. So doing little things like that, activating and breaking it down in chunks. This is a huge area. I keep reminding people, it, it's a massive area. So you have to kind of again, focus on those nodes, those small areas where you can come influence change, begin doing that. So I know that I know this is high level. I know, I know exactly what you're asking for, how, but it has been done. I think it's um, it's, you have a common theme in their message. And once this gets out there, people will be like, okay, this is where they want to go. Let's see what we can do. So.
And, and I know, I just one more thing, there's, uh, and I think Michael alluded to it a little bit earlier, where it's almost, uh, you know, a chicken or egg, what's going to happen first, you know? And I, so I know a lot of this is based on the premise that we've seen a shift in the dynamic of who holds the cards in the workforce, right? It used to be, you wanted to work for a company, you went where they sent you. Now it's the new workforce is living where they want to live and the companies are following the talent. And so I think that's the first step, I guess, is getting or, or I may be wrong, creating, creating a place where the talent wants to live and then the business will follow. But that, so I guess I guess for me, the important part of this is again, I'm, and I, I don't want to sound like at all negative on this because I I'm, I'm excited about the vision. For me, you know, the devil's in the details of how we execute it.
And, and, and the good news is it's not just talent, it's, it's, it's visitors. It's people who, who want the type of retail that they want. For, for the first time, all of that is sort of aligned. If you talk to office workers, they, this is the kind of environment where they want to, want to work. They, that's also where residents want to live. And it's where people, you know, tourists want to come. So it's all together. Um, it is going to be um, slow in some ways, sort of piecemeal. Good news is we've got three developments right now that are under construction that are basically this, you know, Ashford Lane, Campus two forty four and High Street, they all meet this. So I think once those get done, that there, there is a momentum to some of these developments when people see that. You know, i- i- it's, it's going to take a little bit of time. The housing is going to take probably the longest to hold the line on some property owners to say, w- we understand that apartments can make it, but the community needs other things. We need more of a balance. Um, and we also have to acknowledge that we are going to have to grow in the core, which is sort of around Marta and, and the mall, we're going to need more multifamily there. O- over twenty years, we're going to need more multifamily for this to work, but we're also going to need more for sale, really everywhere else in, in the market.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
Well, again, I'd say you gotta start like Michael said, you gotta start small, big area. So pick one. He said devil's in the details. Absolutely. Pick one and do it really well. So build on the momentum you've already done. You've got the core area at Campus two four four, High Street, where it's starting to see some legs. Go continue to invest there and see what happens and make these connections. Not to say you shouldn't go across Ashford Dunwoody, you need to think about that, but kind of build on the nucleus and kind of say, was it like that? If you spread yourself too thin and try to do too much to everywhere, you won't see the impact quickly. You'll lose some of that momentum. So.
And I, I think you said something similar to the, to this is that I, I think the important part of this plan is that it's not a static document. It's dynamic. We're constantly reevaluating, revisiting, adjusting as the market conditions change. Yeah.
A- and, and I, I, I don't think, um, a recession is a good thing, but in downturns i- is when a lot of these things can't happen. If you have a vision and you come out of a time when, you know, if, if you bought a property five, six years ago and you, and you invested this, it might be hard for you to make the changes that we really want you to make. But if somebody else buys it at a lower, you know, investment, it might be easier for them. So timing is sort of on our side for, for some of these. But then someone's going to take some, some investment from the city. We have to pick and choose some of the, the projects that we want to move. And hopefully that will spur, you know, the, the, the private sector to think about it as well.
Okay. Thank you. And like I said, I, I'm excited to see where this takes us, um, and would appreciate knowing what it is that, um, how we can best implement this to, to make, get it closer to reality. So thank you.
We'll start with my, my easier questions and I'll get probably into stuff that's outside the scope of your work as I go down. Um, the economic impacts that's in present day dollars, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, was there any estimate or do we have any estimate? Tom kind of broached on this and you all touched on this as well. Uh, what sort of investment from the city this will take to, to guide or promote uh, even just the ROM? So we, we know, I mean, if we're going to, hopefully the ROI will be greater than what we put in in terms of tax dollar, but that I think is a useful number to have in mind.
We did not, as part of this, we were not scoped to really kind of do that. There's, we didn't know.
Sure.
When we come out to the fruition. So now that's really one of the next things you begin looking at and saying, hey, where are the best group investments? There's, you could look at that map and say, there's in twenty different parks, fifteen different connections. I mean, where do you begin looking at that? My suggestion is we've kind of tried to highlight and say, let's start something small to see what the impact is, like a test case. I keep going back to my, my trail, I like connection, but you pick something that you can kind of is reasonable, is doable and see to start seeing the impacts and what the conversations are generated and created by. But yeah, that, there's a lot of different ways you can go here. Some of it's going to be private development driven too. We say we want a grid. Let's say, let's say the mall over years, we want to see some grid network. That's, that's a private development in instituting that, not just, it's not the city going and building that grid. And so it's, it's a partnership too. And that's what's not, it's hard to say, well, which, which is what? We don't know yet.
Yeah. We're kind of chicken or egg, right? You know, do we guide the private development or do we spark the private development?
It's a little bit of both, right? And so, and that's why we have these little knobs. We talked about the beginning, you know, what do you turn to kind of start the process? So you pick some things that are kind of low hanging fruits, whether it's do a diagnostic of the zoning, where are we? Where do we continue to run into roadblocks? Or people have, like an official say, I had questions about this. Do a deeper dive there. Pick off some of these things and begin promoting it. Those are really good, easy, easy wins.
Okay. Uh, next question I had is just if you could touch on maybe some of the transportation and transit assumptions that you made. Um, this estimate is of about fifteen thousand more people into this area. Are we assuming that the location of the transit and that the, the bike and the um, trails will be able to counteract all those additional people living there? Um, because the roads are already.
Yeah, yeah. Pretty much. Again, so first off, when we talk about a majority of those people, we focused a lot of the greater density, number one, on, uh, in around the MARTA station, take, take advantage of what you've got. Obviously, the other thing to think about is that we've tried to, with the grid plan is to say, I mean, you don't, the grid network really doesn't exist as much as you'd like, let's say. We build out the grid network, whether it's public or private investment, you build out redundancy. So you expand the road network, but getting greater movement, right? So your people are not locked into one way or two way, I think, ways of moving. Third, we began thinking about this in kind of four quadrants. You could look at this area really easily develop into four quadrants, um, even you know, you go look at this, you, you kind of have a northeast, south, you know, quadrants, begin breaking that up. If your goods and services are kind of provided in those areas, if people are living there and work, or maybe not be working there, but going to retail and doing those things. Um, if you can break in the barriers of moving, of movement, um, so you can walk a quarter mile and grab something, then you'll start seeing tra- transportation patterns change. I mean, it's not overnight, but you're kind of instituting that kind of as, as a kind of a cultural shift to have. And people have historically not had that option. So you've got to give that option to and make it very easy for them. Um, it's not enough to build a multi-use trail. You're going to have wayfinding and signs so people know where to go, right? Um, has to be distinctive and clear and easy and safe. So that's, that's one of the other assumptions too, is to kind of be breaking these super area blocks out and making it much more connected. And again, people are still going to be driving to come to the mall originally. I, you know, that's not going to change. Um, but again, hopefully we make it that much more easy for them to do it.
So did, sticking with transportation and then, yeah, well, I guess what kind of assumption, assumptions did you make in terms of connectivity to other parts of the city or other surrounding cities, you know, especially you know, to the east part of the city where you've got the, the village of Georgetown or
Yep.
obviously Sandy Springs is literally right across the line. Um, I guess, how did you look at that aspect?
We, we looked at, you know, we looked at a number of past plans, what they're looking at. I mean, there was conversations with PCID about how you connect to the Cox Enterprise Campus and build those gaps. Um, there's options there. Um, everyone has to participate to do that, but there are ways to make those connections to the east. There are some, um, it's challenging for road networks just because of existing residential neighborhood, but there are some trail connections to the east that you can really take advantage of. They're on the screen now. I mean, they're very tiny, but you can kind of see them connect to the Georgetown area. And, and you know, there's lots of discussions about the top end and what happens in there and trail connectivity, but there are other areas to navigate eastward. So we did think about that. Ashford Dunwoody being the major connection north and south, you're already doing work there. Uh, but thinking even long-term, how you get across the interstate, you know, and then connecting down to Brookhaven. Brookhaven's got a path network. So we're thinking both about within the city, but also the adjacent banners of the city. So that's some high, it's high level to be sure.
A- a- and I'd also add to Andrew mentioned the, uh, the TOD study that PCID and MARTA are doing, which we'll be involved in. They're also going to update the LCI plan for the entire perimeter area. So we have our vision that we will put forward for that. And then it's like, okay, how do we make that vision that we want to build work with the entire perimeter market? So those types of connections between Sandy Springs and Dunwoody and, and Brookhaven need to be sort of hammered out there.
All right. And this last question I can almost guarantee is outside of the scope of your work, but I just want to hear your thoughts on it, both of you while you're up here. Um, and that's um, location of educational facilities, um, in one of these town nodes. If we're going to add fifteen thousand people, they're not all going to have kids. But there's no more trees to cut down at Dunwoody High School to expand there. So I, I think we need to put some thought into where we might try to guide the, um, the school district into.
We a hundred percent agree. Um, that was out of forefront. It came up a lot. We get that. I mean, we certainly understand. I think we, there's a great desire to continue the engagement and highlight the need for this. I mean, up until, I can't speak. My takeaway from it is now you have some hard data of where you want to go with your vision. You can put those numbers out and say, this is, see, this is what's actually happening before saying anecdotally, not that you weren't doing that, but hey, we're really getting bit, we're, we're getting over crowded day because they actually it's, there's a lot going on. Oh.
Yeah.
We've discussed that a lot, how that's a difficult.
And, and I think that's one of the next steps is to, to sit down. This is our vision. This is what we're looking at over the next twenty years. We think it, 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 it could happen. And there are a number of locations in perimeter where, where an education institution works. And they're, they've probably not been this, um, inexpensive in, in many years. So this is the, the time to do it.
No. Well, that's the question I have for now. Thank you both for everything you've done to help put this together.
I appreciate having a vision to work toward and I, I like this, it to suggest in the next twenty years, we'll be increasing our population by twenty five percent is daunting. My question's on housing, what we are seeing now presented to us are rent or occupied only projects. What market forces need to change? What environment are we looking at economically to make owner occupied attractive?
Would you like me to answer that, Andrew?
Well, I mean, I, I don't want Michael added that, but I think proactively pursuing, there are developers who do condominium developments. There are developers who do age restricted quality development. Can point to the meeting around the perimeter. You have to go practically find those and, and again, pursue those and make it clear. I mean, I'm, I I know you will have said it. I know you guys have been championing that, but now it's, it's written, written down saying this needs to needs to shift. And so again, part of parcel is actively going and pursuing that and saying, this is the mix we need. If we're going to, you know, you have some leverage now because you have where you want to go. You have a recognition that you're going to grow. I mean, there's, I, I think the entire metro area is going to grow and you have to, that's the reality. So how do you balance, you know, manage that change? But you have the leverage to, to ask for that. And there's going to be some tough conversations in the future to say, if we want that, again, I go back to what are the barriers you need to change? You know, what makes it easier in the zoning to allow for that? Um, and to Michael's point, when there's changes in the economy, like we're seeing with the office market, even potential mild recession or a dip, um, take advantage of that to kind of say, we need to really shift our focus. That seems like a general answer, but there's a lot of moving parts with that.
I appreciate that we can be proactive. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. A- a- and, and I'd say twenty years is a long time. Um, and just because right now, one type of development and apartments, I think it's been for many years, the easy to do, uh, private equity understands it, you build it, you can sell it. It, it's been very easy. There are, especially in town, a growing group of developers who are building really quality, not just townhomes, but also stacked flats and sort of interesting, unique product. And we need to go and bring those people here and put them together with, with property owners or get them to buy property and, and really sell it. But it's, it's going to be difficult. It's going to be a long, I think, term struggle to sort of hold the line and say, no, in certain areas, we don't need a single new apartment. We've got enough we need for sale of all types.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Joe.
Thanks. Hey, uh, thank you so much. Um, it's all about actions, strategic implementation, actions and follow-up. So, um, thank you so much. It's a plan. It's plan. Execute, analyze, plan, execute, analyze. So I think we'll go, I'd like to see next, you can go back to your slide, the next step action, just to kind of summarize next steps. Think, um, what I'd like to see is more like, okay, if it's a quarterly check-in or a semi annual check-in, it's sort of like we have a a plan with, with some milestones on there, putting a little more dates and, and metrics and specifics on that to move forward on there. Um, I think the idea about, um, engaging our development authority, what role does that have? Right? Uh, City of Atlanta, Invest Atlanta purchased a, a forty-six story, you know, office building at two Peachtree Street downtown Atlanta. The Development Authority bought that, right? They're going to convert it into residential, right? So it's an adaptive reuse. So how do we engage our development authority? Do we, do we need to create another authority, yada, yada? I'd like to hear more about that on, on, on next steps. I'd like to hear more about specific zoning that we could or should redo and undertake, like a little bit like we did on the village. Right? Um, if it's, if it's the best, how they can, you know, like you say, um, remove barriers from a government, uh, that we can do that. Um, I just have this, uh, favor any green space that we have in the plan. I would uh, prefer that the aspirational is that it is publicly owned.
Understood.
Um, versus, I know there's Avalon, there's these things, but at the end of the day, those are privately owned and so on. And there's this uh, debate, it's kind of a, um, you know, where are you coming from perspective? But I believe it's, it's a publicly owned use of green space, then I think that's benefit for all the public versus a private entity, um, saying, well, sorry, you can't use it for these hours because we have something else going on. I thank you for, um, you know, shouting back out to the PATH Foundation. Obviously we're looking at incorporating their PATH Plan of looking at the PICD's, PCID's former trail plan. Um, I appreciate the call out about activating the Dunwoody MARTA Station at that ground level, right? This is that whole adaptive reuse. There's right? We can have three dozen things going on and they can all contribute to the big picture, right? Um, so again, backing into a strategic implementation plan of a, okay, what are we going to do in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, et cetera? But yeah, not just sitting on the shelf, this aspiration, but yeah, what are we going to implement that? Um, I'd like to see examples, potential of other city investment. Uh, there's the carrot in the stick. So if there's other carrots that the city can offer aside from rezoning, um, be nice to hear about those things. Um, you know, what other incentives? I know we have our development authority, et cetera, but yeah, what other things we can do, uh, there as well. Um, and I, I definitely would like to hear more about that. The Office to, you know, I'm going to call it owner occupied conversion versus multifamily conversion, but I really love to hear more about that. Um, and on the economic impact, I'd also like to hear about, because we really, really, I'd love to see come to fruition a, a light rail or BI, BR, BRT as a minimum across the top end of two eighty-five. And I think that would also greatly spur economic impact in our area because look, face it, it's Marta, but it only goes, you know, two more stops north. It doesn't get people to really come that live further away, uh, to work here, um, that the east west is so woefully inadequate for Marta across the top end. So I'd love to see, you know, where we fly in with that there. Um, so I guess it's more comments than, but you know, you, all you mentioned in your study, property value created one point eight billion. Well, High Street just phase one is two billion private investment in there. So I think that, that's a low number. So I think that that's a low number. Property value created one point eight billion. I think that's on the low side myself. I just am going to be. Optimistic glasses half full. And it does, you know, you mentioned a twenty year, but a thirty year, the ARC region is is going to grow fifty one percent, right? And over fifty years and DeKalb County is going to grow. Two hundred and seventy seven thousand people are going to move here additional to DeKalb County. So even if you pull out ten percent of that, that. Into Dunwoody, that's twenty seven thousand more people by uh twenty fifty. So. There's going to be more people here. So I'd like to hear about workforce housing as well, reducing vehicle miles travel, you know, workforce housing. You know, because we want people living, working where they live. So anyway, thanks a lot. I'm looking forward to that.
Well, we appreciate that. And everyone said, what's the devil the details used to that? And now I'm a designer by trade, so I hate play, I hate plans. This is my shelf. It irritates me. Um, but I know Michael knows that we're not here to do a plan. We really want to take incremental steps and do that. And we've talked about. What are those quarterly next steps? There's some baby steps, very incremental, but you're going to see some good stuff come from from the the staff. So.
Hey, John, you're.
Thank you. I appreciate the efforts. I appreciate the uh presentation. I do appreciate the citizens coming and giving feedback and as well as. Members of council that have already spoke. I agree with pretty much almost everything that is said. Um, I really appreciate Mr. Starling's comments regarding owner occupied. I think that is an important piece that. This city council and all the city councils prior, we have pushed for a. We have scaled back and really approved nothing when it comes to multifamily uh rental units in the city of Dunwoody. We put something for senior housing and that may or may not happen. I don't know. It's it's in the works, but as far as multifamily rental, zero. We'd love to get condos. Nothing, no condo has been built in fifteen years. No stacked flats have been built in fifteen years. So this is a twenty year plan, but in the last fifteen, I haven't seen a whole lot of movement, moving the way in which we're talking. And I'd love to see some movement. We have done some townhomes. We have, uh, again, tried to keep the owner occupied. Uh rental fifty fifty mix. Uh, we have High Street. High Street is zoned for both condos and apartments. So far, I'm not seeing any plans hit our hit our books when it comes to condos. They're pushing only apartments. So I I like your plan. I like the ideas. We need to plan for the future, but. As far as I'm concerned, we need to look at ways in which are to foster. People who currently live in single family houses to be able to stay here. And right now, we as a council, we as a city have done a really poor job of that, except for the townhomes, which are. Numerous levels that you might have to walk the stairs. So I'm looking for changes. I'm looking for owner occupied. I'm looking for stacked flats and condos. And so far I haven't seen it, but I'm hopeful. That that will be coming in the near future. And if this planning and the talking with the developers can make that happen, please do so. Thank you.
Yeah, um, Mr. Fane, I know you want to say something.
Sure. Are you about to hear me, Andrew Gorman?
No, not at all.
How about right now?
No.
You've you've gotten worse.
My apologies. We'll go ahead, Andrew. I'll let you speak then to it.
You can text one of your colleagues and they can read it and he can read it if you text your colleague. Yeah, try that. All right. So. Oh, yeah, sorry.
One, one of the things about for sale housing and and one of the things that we we've talked about a lot with all of this. Is to get for sale housing, you have to have a certain type of place. People will rent an apartment and in, you know, in the middle of a a mall parking lot. They're not going to buy a condo there. So so it's the environment around it. So it's all of these investments with your street. What it looks like, amenities around it, places you can walk to. So that is some of where we're headed. And so the chicken and egg is sort of. You know, it 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 is true, but I I I do think that that developers are starting to look at sort of. A suburb, suburb like ours a little differently where they they might be willing to do some of the stack life. And they're not going to be three hundred, right? There 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 might be fifty, there might be sixty or ninety smaller units on smaller lots in a mixed use environment.
Yeah, for sure.
There was comment earlier about conversion of used or vacant office buildings into single into residential. Tonight, sixty four and sixty six perimeter center east sixty four is a fifteen story building right along two eighty five. What I I've asked you, I think this previously, we've talked about this. I just want to make sure that I ask you again. What, how would that be converted into residential? Is it possible? Is it likely? Is the building construction for office only? How hard would it be to convert that type of business or that type of building? Into a residential type facility?
Ob- obviously, I'm not an expert. Um, it it has a lot to do with the size of of the building and the depth.
And the plumbing.
Happens in in deep buildings is you you have the core and you go into your condo. And then it's a long condo and there's light at the at the very end for one room, but not the other.
Right.
Uh, but some of our older buildings, so that one may not, I'm not positive about that. I think one of the things we should do is. Is maybe have a meeting and bring some architects together and let let's talk.
What happened with the or bring in Urban Land Institute, you and I?
Yeah, we we could do that. I mean, those.
Not just us either. There's other cities that are really interested, right?
You know, adaptive reuse. Some of our older buildings, I think, could work. That one, I'm not sure. It's a, it's a pretty deep.
So one of the things that happened in Dunwoody, which most councils probably really aware of is that before we were a city, DeKalb had. In their zoning ordinance, at any five story or below office building, or am I saying it wrong? Three, whatever it was, they were small office buildings, two story office buildings that could. Could could a five story apartment buildings. So in Dunwoody, whatever inventory we had of those kind of buildings, which I think are going to prove the easiest to convert. Or an easier path to conversion, they're gone. Because I think in Tucker, they actually have approved. Tearing down most of an office park, but keeping building apartments from new, but also converting one building, I think. We'll see if it happens. But yeah, it's an interesting situation. Go ahead.
Uh, just for observation too, is creating that environment like, uh, Michael, you just said about if you're going to put condos, people need to have that. Sense of why am I going to live here? Um, I just spent a week in New York, Manhattan, of course, but whatever, but. I just, I, you know, run the mileage. It's that perspective. There is, if I go from the mall over to the the Meridian Hotel, that's a half a mile. And in Manhattan, there is no way in heck, I'm going to take a taxi. I'm going to walk it. It's it's a ten, ten minute walk. And and if we have, we know we'll successful, we can have a measurement of outcome. We'll know we're successful when we don't need a shuttle. And people don't need to think about going in their car to get to the mall if they're staying at La Meridian, that it's safe, inviting, and we have that. Uh, uh, super blocks have been subdivided in a street grid. And we create that environment. That's really immeasurable of a outcome of, you know, what we should be aspiring to.
So. On the hu- the ownership part, Michael Starling and I have met with a few condo developers. I, if you don't know, housing is going to be a big subject at the state legislature this session, and I was spoke speaking to our legislature. One of our legislators yesterday. Who said if the governor was going to invest in infrastructure for Dunwoody. To so you could be more dense. And I made the point that we're probably outside of Atlanta. We're probably the most, for sure, we're the most dense um of any suburban city. There's no doubt. So I made that point, you know, what would it be? And I said, I don't really know. That's a, you can't put me on the spot like that. But there's some inherent infrastructure issues with this whole plan. And it's not, you know, the fact. The cap can't grow by three hundred thousand people. They don't have sewer capacity for fifty thousand more people. And there was a lot at our meeting this weekend, there was a lot of talk about. These super sites where the governor's recruiting in these big corporations to build factories. And then has to get people there to work and the cities have septic. They don't even have sewer yet. And sewer, a sewer site, a sewer plant was what somebody told us thirty million dollars to build three years ago, it would have been fifteen. And so I think that there, as we go through this process, we have to start looking at the infrastructure issues. Can we? What's our sewage situation? What's our water situation in the region, not just us? And I'm part of a group of mayors. And county commissioners all over the region that are talking about these things because these are big questions. These are. Yes, the projections say we're going to grow by this much, but what does that really look like? And what does it mean for the region? And the housing questions are the same, right? We don't want more of the same of what we have. Um, we have enough of that. And while nobody would buy a condo in the mall parking lot today, Avalon has condos. And million dollar townhomes essentially in a mall parking lot. And it, they were all built simultaneously and maybe that's why it worked. Some of them literally face a Chick-fil-A. It's a dynamic. I don't admit, I don't totally don't understand, but it's working. And so it's working. And so how do we get the products? You know, that's going to be a big question as we go forward. How do we get the products we need? To diversify our housing base, and that does need to include some workforce housing, right? We need to figure out what that looks like for Dunwoody. We have tons of service jobs. We're fortunate, I think, the closer, we already know, the closer you are to Marta, the easier it is to get employees. All over the region, people are struggling. That's probably not going to change either. So I think as we look for things, we need to be looking at infrastructure and what that looks like. I am extremely pro transit. I will tell you that in Metro Atlanta, a big part of the solution to the housing crisis is transit. Because we've got to build housing where and let people get to where job centers are. We need to build housing where the land is affordable. But Marta, there was just a report today that Marta's ridership is down sixty percent from like a decade ago. And so there's, and I'm pro Marta. There's some big questions that we have to add. We we orient our success around Marta. And I think the people that work right around Marta and potentially will live right around Marta may be using Marta. But something's not working in terms of transit today. We are, I have spent the last. Five years working on bus, we're not calling it bus transit anymore, rapid transit across the top end. It'll be a decade or more before it's built out because of how they're going to build the top and uh managed lanes. But those are all pieces of a puzzle that we have to figure out. On your next steps, I don't want to work with Marta. I'm just telling you that. I I like Marta and I like the people there, but we're pretty good at. Densifying the area around the Marta Station on our own. Um, they do some things I don't like. They build a lot of parking in their. Transit Orient Development so far. They have a lot of parking. And so we've already shown with an office building and a hotel sharing a parking lot that it can be done to reduce parking. And so I think we are good on, and I'm not really territorial, but I'm a little territorial about that property over there. So my questions are. The buildings we're talking about, other building that sold, they're on the other side of Ashford Dunwoody Road from the mall, correct? Yes, and we s- we talk about two perimeters, but I'm wondering. One of this, you know, you said we're two, we have virtually no empty retail space, which means our retail land. Owners are doing really well. It also probably means the tenants are doing really well, whatever that means in this market. So what is it? And you'll have to answer today, Michael, but what is it that we need to be looking at? With this, but these, but this potential opportunity on the other side of Ashford Dunwoody Road to enhance it. Does the Buck, you know, in Buckhead, they have one loop shuttle as opposed to every building? Is that a game changer for office buildings? Would that be a game changer for just redevelopment? Because I think where we're going to face the first line of potential meaningful redevelopment is on that side of Ashford Dunwoody. And so you don't have to answer today. This is a process, but it's something to think about. What is it working with PCID or whoever? That we need to be thinking about short term and long term, midterm and long term about that side of Ashford Dunwoody Road. Because the malls, there's so much potential to redevelop, even the parts, the parking lots at the mall. And we have to work with them, but it's doing, it's the best performing mall in Georgia, I think. Um, or it was in December and. And High Street's coming online and campus two four four is doing great. And if a corporation came in tomorrow and they wanted to build from scratch, we'd be in the running on that side, this. The mall side of Ashford Dunwoody, but what do we do about the other side? How do we, what in, what government investment might be needed? What? Private investment might need need it, you know, how do we make it fit? Again, you don't have to answer today, but I actually think that's today, like the most important part of the plan. This is my perspective.
Certainly an area we talked.
Right, right, right.
The the most likely to change.
Right.
Is changing the valuation.
Right.
What's happening there? And a a lot of what's in the plan, what we're talking about is just implementing that more and more streetscape or more parks.
Right.
Space, but it's also working with those property owners.
Right.
Just what we want.
Right, and right.
And that's where for sale housing would probably happen.
Right. But then we also still need to make it so that you can walk comfortable, which you said, to Park Place Shopping Center and have dinner. Well, not at Alon's anymore, but at Cafe Intermezzo or something. And so I I think that to me is almost the most critical part of this is. An opportunity that three years ago, we didn't know we were going to have. I don't even think two years ago, we kind of knew what was happening. So anybody having other questions? We look forward to continuing to work on this. And a reminder that this is not happening overnight, that even the population growth that Joe referred to, which is. Twenty five or more years off twenty fifty, I think is what you said. Thirty, I mean, that this is long term. This is long term and who knows, but thank you.
Thank you all. And thank you for um having the time and being so inquisitive. This is how things change. Thank you.
Appreciate it. And just to let you know, uh, the final report is being worked on. So you're going to get a a nice big two hundred and forty page document. That you can read at your leisure.
Electronically?
Yeah, you don't have to read the whole thing, but it is.
Please no papers. Is that what you're saying, Council?
That will be done very soon. And it's a lot of, it's a lot easier to sort of comprehend the first fifty, sixty, seventy pages. So thank you.
All right, next is. Brent Walker, thank you, sorry.
Evening, Mayor. Council. The item I have before y'all, and I for discussion is the facility usage agreement with Peachtree Club softball. Uh, as y'all know, we discussed when we approved Dunwoody Senior Baseball's usage agreement. Uh, we introduced the idea of sharing some time on the West Field with the uh middle school program. Uh, Jeff Cantwell is also here. Y'all heard from him earlier. Uh, he and I've had a couple of meetings, one in person and several on the phone. To discuss how this transition could take place. They've all been very beneficial. We submitted this usage agreement to him and his board. They are in agreement with the document as written. Um, we have a very good working relationship and a good plan of how to be able to share the facility. Uh, for the times that are allocated to softball to also allow uh two games with DSB. Um, basically softball will start practice at four fifteen until five forty five. On the field, they'll have access to the batting cages after that, which will allow Dunwoody Senior Baseball to start games at six o'clock. On days that they have practice, uh that softball has practice. On game days for softball. Uh, that will go all the way till seven and then we senior baseball will give one game on that field at night. Both organizations are aware of that setup and are in agreement with it. We're also working through the field layout and the cost for. The additional amenities for a new mound, um temporary fencing, backstop, all those things. Uh, that we will need to transition the field to softball. I've sent uh some of the products to Jeff and he's looking at it with his board. He sent me some things that they use. At other facilities. So we have a good um point right now where we are working towards solutions. We have a good. Conversation right now between Dunwoody Senior Baseball and the softball program. So everything is moving in a very good direction. With uh both organizations who are sharing that facility. So as part of that, this is the um usage agreement before you tonight. To allow uh for them to be a tier two program with us, just like uh high sticks and girls soccer and boys soccer from the school program. So they will be uh allowed to rent a facility at that rate of fifteen dollars an hour. Uh, it is our standard agreement language. It's the same agreement that you've seen for all the other school and sports programs. Uh, with no difference other than the time allocated is what's shown in the memo as that August first through October thirty first and four to seven P M. So with that, I'll open it to any questions, y'all, man.
Okay, uh, anybody have questions? Just raise your hand because I don't think everybody's going to have questions, Tom. Sorry, John.
Uh, yeah, uh, thank you, Brent. Um, first of all, I just want to say that, you know. Obviously, I think we all share this vision of one day having an actual softball complex, uh. A full softball complex for um anyone that wanted to participate in that sport. Uh, but this is certainly. Lacking that facility, I think this is a good short term solution. Well, hopefully. Hopefully, short term because we can get to the thing, but this is a good way to address, address that lack of facilities for for. Primarily the girls for playing softball. So I'm I'm happy that we're doing this and I'm happy that all the parties are working together. And it's kind of. The only thing I want to bring up is um. And I'm sure that you have handled this already. Uh, the the shared responsibilities on 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 the field as far as, you know, the the organization's responsibility. Cities' responsibility since both Dunwoody Senior and the softball are going to be sharing a field, you know, uh, two things. Since both Dunwoody Senior and the softball are going to be sharing a field, you know, two things. First of all, that are we going to be providing training as far as the proper ways on the, the crumb rubber, you know, maintaining, because obviously turf field is different than a grass field. And whatever maintenance responsibilities that they would have, that they will be given all the information to, to do that in, in the proper way. I'm, I'm sure we're going to handle that. And, and then also just making sure that we continue, continue to have open dialogue between the city, Dunwoody Senior Baseball and the softball organization to make sure that we don't run into any issues with misunderstanding of whose responsibility is what. And I, and again, I know you've already had those conversations. I just want to, you know, when I was reading through the, the agreement and got to the shared responsibilities, I just wanted to make sure that we know, okay, hey, on the days that you use the field, you're responsible for this, you know, whether it be cleaning the bathrooms or, you know, and, and just making sure that each organization is clear, is clear on what their responsibility is so that A, there's no butting of heads and B, nothing falls through the cracks.
Right, absolutely. And so then, then kind of the next steps as we move closer to kind of the day-to-day programming aspects of it. This is the higher end usage agreement, giving them access and all that. So as we get closer, we'll be having meetings with both organizations at the same time to make sure that everybody's on the same page as we move into the fall. The good thing about the, the dates that Peachtree Club softball needs it, that August to September 1st is really kind of a dead time for Dunwoody Senior. So it'll be a whole month that softball will be the primary user on the field. And so for a third of their program season, they'll be the sole user. So Dunwoody Senior really doesn't get started until September. So we're talking six weeks during this timeframe that the two will be utilizing the field. So, but to your point, yes, we still need to have some of those conversations of the getting in the weeds, so to speak, of how we're going to do day-to-day. But where we are right now is everybody's on board. Everybody's moving towards that same goal and we're in a good place between both organizations.
Anybody? Catherine?
I appreciate a creative solution. This is a great first step. And I speak for Councilwoman Harris, who was unable to be here tonight, but she's very enthusiastic and looks forward to continuing our softball field search.
John?
Thank you, Brent. Yes, I'm looking forward to this moving forward. I guess I'm just looking for the transparency aspect, making sure that all the eyes are dotted, tees are crossed. I looked on the social, Georgia Social Security Secretary of State website and didn't see the organization being listed as a nonprofit. Has that happened yet?
As far as I know, they are a nonprofit.
Okay. I didn't see them on the Secretary of.
Jeff can come up and answer the question. I give permission, which I think is what has to happen.
Yeah, if you'd like to come up, respond.
Nope, you gotta answer the microphone. I'm really sorry.
We're actively working on the renewal of the nonprofit right now.
All right, so.
Our secretary is, has got a renewal and that'll get back up there shortly.
All right. And then that really goes to the next question. There's organizational bylaws and a board and all of that. All the requirements of the contract that you're basically going into to have this type of agreement, those will all be done prior to it coming to council for approval.
Yeah, we have a full board, president, vice president, treasurer, secretary, the whole, the whole deal.
I appreciate that. Again, none of that was given to us. We don't have any information regarding your organization and the, you know, the bylaws and all, all the stuff that's required as part of the contract. We haven't had any of that feedback yet. So.
That's fair. Yeah, it is part of this. So we are running this, the Dunwoody High School softball. So it is a, a full nonprofit.
And then, and then I'm sure the insurance will happen at the same time.
Yeah, the insurance on our programs.
That's it. Other than I'm looking forward to having you. I just want to make sure that you're on an evil, even footing with all the other organizations that have to meet those same requirements. So I just wanted to make sure that that's, that's done. So thank you. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. And anybody else?
Looking forward to anybody finding some extra acreage. You know, we've tried, we've tried. So please let us know if you have some land that we could secure. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just real quick, on Councilman Hittigan's comments. Brent, so there's really two different things. Registration, you know, incorporating on the Secretary of State, through the Secretary of State, you can incorporate as a nonprofit. But what actually gets you nonprofit status is an IRS certificate. So a nonprofit should establish both incorporation through the Secretary of State and active compliance. But separately, they should have an IRS letter designating them as a nonprofit. And you may not see that on the Secretary of State's website. Depends on how they were originally organized. But they should be able to prove through an IRS certificate that they've been designated a 501(c) whatever FYI.
Yeah.
We are doing that as well. So we will have all that, the tax certificate and everything that will be finalized.
If I can ask a question, man?
Yes, you can.
When you say you're doing that, or Councilman Hittigan's question, has it been done or you're in the process of doing it?
It has been done, but it expired and we're renewing.
I don't, do 501(c) threes expire?
I, I don't know exactly. Like, that's not my role.
I understand. So Brent, before you bring this back, oh, I's dotted and T's crossed, please.
And that's, so before it's fully executed, all those, all that has to be satisfied.
Just because we're the insurer.
You guys can agree to the language of the agreement, but we won't have it fully executed until this man over here tells me that everything is there to.
And just because I've, I've gone through the pain of working through, starting up a nonprofit and trying to get the IRS designation letter. And that is a PIA pain in the, and so, but there's, get some legal, you know, show the process of, because I think yes, you've, you show that you're acting as one. Then you can, you know, say that, if you show that you're acting as one, there are some legal measures that allow people for the tax donation deductible and so on. So I think it could take up to 18 months or something to get that designation from the IRS.
All right. We'll see it again. Thank you. Anybody else? Questions? No? Okay. I kind of cut everybody off. All right. Mr. Vanicki, you still here?
I'm hiding in the corner. Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
This is a brief discussion on something that we put off for three years and will admit to it. In 2020, the city was planning to do its usual four or five-year community survey. And we decided that with pandemic going on, that was not exactly the perfect time to ask how city services were doing. So we put it off and then kind of waited and we figured 2023 would be the perfect year to do it post-COVID. And it was included in the 2023 budget. Back in November, we released an RFP out and we had three responses to it. We had a team internally review all three with a known budget of about $20,000, which would be the approximate cost of it. And we scored the three different firms, Probosky Research, which was the one that staff is recommending with a score of 256. And then a secondary one, ETC, at 89% of that and at Milan Chicago at 75%. We had discussions with Probosky Research since their score was above the other two significantly. We also checked in some of their references and we asked all of them for samples. And they worked with communities that were like us. It's hard to find an exact match for Dunwoody, but they definitely have a feel to doing research of this type for this community. With those in mind, this is the firms that we have, that we're recommending, and then we could put it on a consent agenda with any discussion, counsel.
Anybody have questions? Rob?
So just because it's a, a survey, did they all propose their own method and survey questions? Or did we, do we have the questions we want them to gather? I guess I'm just trying to, is it like an apples to apples or is it a best technical, we just think these folks are going to do the best job approach?
No, we had a discussion with them on that. And what they'll generally do is take the last one we did, the 2018, and use that as the core of it. Because part of what we want to do is see trends between the previous one and now. What changed? What didn't? There should be a little bit of movement with new questions, but not a lot, because the one thing that we discussed with them is we want to focus on broadening the groups that we reach out to, even though it was good in the past, we want to make it even better in reaching out to groups that we don't tend to communicate with that often. And then also being able to consistently say, this is where the city has changed over time. They worked on, they, they've worked with different methods of it. We will work with them on the details of it. Once the contract is finalized, however, a great deal of it will be internet surveys, but we also need to reach out to those that are technology disadvantaged from that.
And, and we're confident that 1% of the citizens is, I mean, says it's statistically significant. We feel like 1% is enough.
That, that will be in a random survey. If we can get 525, it is a statistic. I can never say that's what straight statistically.
So we're anticipating 525 completed surveys, not that we're going to survey. So if if someone just doesn't respond, then whatever demographic in terms of age, income, location in the city, type of housing they live in, we'll try to mirror that with the replacement.
A part of the results will also be the reserve return rates based upon demographics like that. So we'll see. There will be some that the, the community will be missed and it needs to be noted that this was a one that shows up in our demographics that is underrepresented in the survey results.
I, I'm asking so many questions just because I think this is really potentially very, very useful because you know, people will show up if there's a problem or they may just be too busy and decide to deal with it and we might not find out. So I think we could hopefully get some really good information.
And I can't, if I have it already forwarded to you, I might've done it a few months ago. I'll send you everybody the 2028, 2018 and the 2023 or 2013, whatever the previous year were.
I appreciate this effort. I think it'll be a good idea. Thanks.
Any, who else? Oh, Tom, sorry.
Yeah, just two quick questions. And I'm kind of focused on the numbers here too. So I saw the 525 number. So there's kind of a targeted approach to, to make sure we get a balanced result. Are we also, is this going to be an open survey as well? Like, for example, will there be a link on our, our social media or, or our website that anybody can participate in this survey?
It, it will be a way that we can filter it so that we only have Dunwoody residents and know that part of it.
But, but it will be an open, so for example, we're not just mailing out and then whoever gets that mail in can take it and whoever doesn't is, is locked out.
Correct. Because the Lambert family does not receive an invitation, the Lambert family could still participate.
And then part two, that it talks in the, in the contract about 525 being the number for responses and that's what it's built on. But if we load out of the park and get 3,000 responses, that doesn't change the dynamic of the contract.
No, no, it, it doesn't. And the workload in doing something like that is minimal, the way it's aggregated. So it's not a lot more for them. And if we got 3,000 responses, your response rate is like.
Yeah, through the roof.
There will be dissertations written on that response.
I was just, I was just curious that if we doubled the response, did that change anything within the contract? It does not. Okay. And then just one last real quick question is, when, when will we get the results?
Hopefully this summer. We're shooting for early summer with, we can get everything out running.
Yeah, I, I wanted to know about if we get a chance to provide a, an impact on some of the, feedback on some of the questions. So yeah, here's what we're going to propose. Just a little check-in, you know, kind of thing.
We'll, we'll send it out to everybody for it. And remember, one of the things we're also looking to do is when the surveys go out, there is exhaustion in surveys. And if there's 40 questions and you get to 30, some people just go, I'm tired of answering. And then all of a sudden we've lost the response rate. So we have to balance out that in looking, when designing.
And I know we used Kennesaw State last time in 2018. And I know a procurement we just posted out there, but did we reach out to these folks and invite them to bid on this work at all?
I am unaware if it was, as we do these, I tend to just put it out there. Those that are in the business know about it when it's out there.
Yeah, they're, they had a pretty good response rate. They did mailers and, you know, whatever else, but it was, they had 516 respondents.
That's interesting.
I just saw that. So yeah, whatever, you know, but I concur with what Rob said. I'd really like to hear back. But I'm looking at them starting as soon as possible. Obviously I wanted, you know, I'd asked to try to do a budget correction amendment last year. But you know, with everything else going on politically and nationally, getting a survey, folks. But I'd like to get this back so we could potentially use this for other things we might do in the third quarter or so of this year to use for support. Thanks.
Everybody okay with consent? So I don't remember 2018, but is, and Jennifer may know the answer to this for this one, or you may. Is it just one vehicle? So if they put it online, it's the same survey as you get in the postcard? Because I don't know that it was, which is fine.
We'll work with them on that.
There are some strategies where you do personal interviews and they're longer and more in-depth. There's different ways of polling. So we look forward to getting the result. Thank you. We'll see this on consent.
Thank you.
Public comments. I have one card. Austin Handle. Please make sure the green light is on and you'll have three minutes.
Madam Mayor and council members, I come to you tonight to reaffirm that you and only you are empowered to bring meaningful change to the city of Dunwoody. Madam Mayor, you told APN Media that decisions made by Police Chief Billy Grogan are not and cannot be reviewed by you or the council due to the structure of this city of governance, the governance of the city. You also mentioned that you believe the leaders of the police department have good decisions for the decisions that they make. Was it a good reason when Brian Bolden asked Chief Grogan to bring in the GBI to investigate our complaints? And he said, no. Was it a good reason when Grogan investigated the matter himself after we informed him that he was a stakeholder in the pending lawsuit for his prior knowledge and negligence? And I often wonder, should the victims have been female, if the outcome would have been different? Grogan protected someone who demanded and texted victims things like, shut up and send me your blank. Or when officer, even messaged another officer's wife and said, do you eat his blank as well as I do? Or when can I eat your blank today? Chief Grogan said this was consensual. And at what point would any of those officers have felt that was a consensual relationship when it was their supervisor's supervisor? While I've been speaking, some of those messages have been released publicly on the Beacon's platform as a matter of public interest and at the request of several victims. More will be available soon. So I ask again, years later, was it a good reason when he protected Fidel Espinoza or Robert Parsons or Officer Pham when he nearly arrested someone for taking too long to fix his wife's car? If Grogan was willing to let these things happen in front of or to his officers, then what is he allowed to happen to individual citizens in the city of Dunwoody? We were not able to forward this information onto the GBI for investigation because it takes a governing official or a department head. The most recent issue, Grogan told APN Media that he was trying to battle sex trafficking in Dunwoody by inviting sex workers into the city of Dunwoody to arrest them. But I also ask you this. He cares about sex crimes because he surely didn't care when a sexual partner worked for him, just a couple doors down from his office, who victimized over five officers in his department. Was a good reason when Grogan decided to falsify official records, admitting that to the news just recently about the prostitution bus to protect business relationships over citizen information. Ma'am, I'm not sure what it is. If Chief Grogan has something over this council, and I really don't know. Or maybe over the city manager. I ask all of you to be brave, to be bold and to stand up to him, or maybe instead to the claims. Because the GBI allows any governing official, including each of you, to request an independent investigation on any of these matters. We know that chief won't bring them in. He's already said no. But while you, you can do so while maintaining neutrality, best case scenario, the GBI clears it. Worst case scenario, maybe what we were saying was true. So I formally ask you to bring in the GBI.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We do need a, an executive session this evening to discuss cybersecurity, real estate and litigation.
Council comments. John?
About a month ago, I read Atlanta Magazine and in there, there was an article regarding dam safety, safety of dams that hold back water.
You might want to spell that.
Yeah, yeah. And it was an interesting article. It made me thinking, we have, we have water here in Dunwoody. I started doing a little research on the internet and found that back in 2017, there was an article by the, I believe it was the Dunwoody Reporter that also mentioned our water treatment, our water facility. And so I started doing research. I wanted to know that if I wanted to make sure that our dams were inspected, safe and proper. It's the responsibility of DeKalb County as well as verification of the state. I sent an email off to DeKalb County and the state trying to get information to verify those aspects. And I got some information back. The dams are inspected. They're going to be inspected again in the next couple of months. There's every two, three-year process. One of the things that they also provided me was the emergency action plan where if the dams were to fail, what is the communication, the police, the emergency action plan? And that emergency action plan that was given to me really only talks about DeKalb County. And as we are a city, there is no coordination as far as I can tell with the city government. I've sent an email off to Chief Grogan and city manager to ask them to review that emergency action plan to see if it's appropriate for the citizens of Dunwoody that it meets all of our needs. And I'm guessing that we will, I've asked them to take a look at it. Eric, I haven't gotten a reply from you. I'm sure, I'm sure you're, you've been busy with issues. I'm sure you're going to get back to me after your discussion with Chief Grogan, who is also not here today. But I think. And after your discussion with Chief Grogan, who is also not here today, but um, I think it's an important issue. Uh, the, the water treatment facility is a, it serves all of DeKalb County. It serves the city of Dunwoody. It's a member of our community, but that and such, there's also risks involved. And I want to make sure that we are prepared for a worst case scenario, which I hope never ever happens. I want us to, you know, hope for the best, but work for a scenario in case it were to fail, that we would be ready to do so. So um, I, again, I sent that uh, email off, I've done the research. And uh, I'm looking forward to ensuring that DeKalb County and the state of Georgia. Uh, oversees and does everything in their power to make sure that we, the citizens of Dunwoody are safe from any possible dam failure. So um, that's uh, my only real questions or my issue that I wanted to raise today. So thank you.
That's good, John, and I think we could say failure of the dam. I suppose a damn failure, felt safe, safety, I just was in my head. Thank you. Joe, anything? Anybody?
I'll actually piggyback on John's comment, which is um, that's a public dam that is actually inspected and we have a number of neighborhood. Ponds that have earthen dams that I doubt have ever been inspected and probably have trees and shrubs. And do we have any way to figure out if any of those are potentially problematic? There's just a question I'm asking out loud.
Just FYI, there is a database and you can't find some of that information. It's because they are much smaller, they don't have to be inspected.
And the, the risk is probably not high, but if a dam is gonna fail in the city, it's gonna be one of those, would be my, my assumption.
Okay, um, with that, I need a motion for executive session.
Move to.
Remember, executive session.
Executive session for purposes of cyber, legal and real estate.
Alright.
Second.
May I, Joe, second by Rob. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Um, any opposed? No, we convene to executive session and we will be back.